All right, I'd like to call to order the June 26, 2023, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Betcha?
Present.
Vice Chair Sandoval?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison asked to be excused for tonight.
All right, so item number three, approval of the June 12, 2023, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? I'm not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak tonight to anything that is not currently on our agenda?
No public comment has been received via email or mail for tonight, and let me check on audience. No virtual audience is seen so far.
Okay, and just let the record show there is no general public here for a comment in person either. All right, item number five, discussion of public participation plan for 2024 comp plan update.
Good evening, Chair Batista, Vice Chair Sandoval, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner at the City of Mount Lake Terrace. I wanted to briefly introduce Sierra Carson, who's joining me today. Would you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, all. Sierra Carson, I'm a Senior Planner with OTAC. We are the consulting firm that is assisting the city with the comprehensive plan update, and I'm here helping Jonathan here present the draft public participation plan. Thank you all for having me here tonight.
So, thank you all. So first, I wanted to go over where we're at with our comprehensive plan update. We kicked off the project last month with OTAC. So right now, we're doing our first June 30 deliverables for the Commerce Grant. So that includes the public participation plan, the Commerce checklist, in addition to some other items. And we're going to start doing our visioning process, which is the first phase of our engagement. So today, I'm going to do a high-level overview of the public participation plan. This is more of a draft at this point, and we do plan to update it and also gather some of your feedback today to take it to council on the next council meeting, July 13th, July 17th. So I'll walk through these slides. So comprehensive plans are mandated for each jurisdiction in Washington State that is either fully or partially planning under the Growth Management Act. Growth Management Act requires periodic updates every 10 years. So Mount Lake Terrace is a fully planning city, which requires an update by December 31, 2024. The last major update of the comprehensive plan was in 2015. We had subsequent amendments in 2017, 2018, and 2019. In a nutshell, comprehensive plans are informed by the Growth Management Act, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, multi-county planning policies, and the countywide planning policies of Snohomish County. And so this process chart is sort of our process for updating the plan. We start with a work program and schedule, followed by a public participation plan that informs the community engagement process that we will use throughout the duration of the project. Visioning is one of the key elements of the community engagement process. That sort of sets the stage as far as where we want to go. Finally, we review and update the comprehensive plan elements, review and update our existing development regulations and our code. This is informed by going through this Commerce periodic update checklist, which is a helpful tool to sort of gather where we're at with meeting certain requirements of the Growth Management Act and new legislation. Subarea plans, while not required, it's an optional thing to include in comprehensive plans. So we do have that built into our comprehensive plan update for Melody Hill and Cascade View. And then we are going through our SEPA and EIS update, which, as you know from previous presentations, our EIS for the comprehensive plan hasn't been updated since about 1980, '81.
Oh.
So it is, yeah, it's pretty old. So the Growth Management Act sets the requirement for developing a public participation program. So this is some of the language that's pulled out of the RCWs, so 3670A, 140. In a nutshell, the public participation plan procedures provide for broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives, opportunity for written comments, public meetings after effective notice, provision for open discussion, communication programs, information services, and consideration of and response to public comments. And so what is the public participation plan? So the way we've developed it, it's a detailed breakdown of community engagement strategies to implement throughout the duration of the project. It includes an overview of potential engagement, outreach, and communication methods and tools. Some of the key engagement strategies that we've identified are to foster an engagement process that is open, inviting, and transparent, ensure that community engagement is equitable, inclusive, and low barrier, aligned with Puget Sound Regional Council's Regional Growth Center Consistency Tool Guidance. So this tool is to assist jurisdictions in developing, updating, or amending center plans. So, for example, a subarea plan would be an example of that. Let's see. Implement an adaptable framework for engaging community through in-person and online engagement opportunities. As we've learned through the pandemic, having accessible online engagement opportunities proves to be helpful to get community voices who have not historically been engaged. So we do want to continue using that model of hybrid, in-person, online opportunities. And then finally, engage the comprehensive plan advisory group. So we'll discuss this in more detail later, but essentially, this is an advisory group that will be recruited and appointed by City Council with about nine to 12 members from a variety of different sectors and interest groups. So that's currently information, and we hope to kick that off in August of 2023. Now, who will be engaged? Firstly, this is not an exhaustive list, but it provides some of the key audiences and groups in our community that we plan to engage and want to engage with. So this includes, I won't read word by word, but neighborhood groups and homeowners, renters, people experiencing housing cost burdens, senior populations, people of color impacted by historic lending practices, such as redlining, displacement pressures, and/or biases, people with disabilities or other special needs, immigrants, migrants, and refugee communities, people with lived experience with homelessness, our small businesses, mom-and-pop landlords, people in businesses at risk of displacement, and providers of social services. So this is in addition to general public outreach, and there'll be opportunities to do some more targeted outreach as we go through the process and identify whose voices need to be included in this effort. And then our interest groups that we've identified, so some of our subject matter experts and those with key interests in the city, so property owners of properties, plan for redevelopment, corporate entities or major employers, so, for example, Pemera, school district representatives, so not just staff, but also students and parents, so including PTA would be an example, transit and transportation services providers, utilities and public service providers, community service organizations, and community-based nonprofits, regional real estate developers of mixed-use and transit-oriented projects, and housing developers of market rate and/or affordable housing, such as housing authorities and consortiums, and finally, city staff and So in an effort to ensure equitable participation and accessibility, we plan to translate and offer interpretation services in Spanish, and then by request or upon need, we plan to translate into Vietnamese, Amharic, Russian, Korean, and other languages as needed. Some of the data that we found from the census highlights that Spanish is pretty much the predominant second language in the city, or primary language, followed by Vietnamese and other languages. So we do have a third-party vendor that we use for a variety of different translation and interpretation needs, so we do plan on using that unless there's another vendor that we find. And, let's see. I think with that, I'm going to turn it to Sierra, who's going to go more in depth about some of the strategies enlisted in the plan.
Thank you, Jonathan. So I'm going to walk us through some of the methods and tools for communication that are outlined in the draft plan. This is not an exhaustive list of all the methods out there. This is a list of best practices that we pulled together in the draft plan and always open to more feedback on these. These general outreach and communication strategies will be important for building awareness about the project over time. These types of communication strategies are also useful for launching the planning process and for informing the public about key updates along the process. So as we launch the project now, as we go back with the draft plan in '24, as we move through key milestones in the process, these are places where we can keep the community up to date. Having a project webpage, coordinating with the city's communication manager with social media, using official notices that would be used for other projects that the city does, like land use action, well, not land use action notices, but notices, as this is a project action, and using mailings potentially as well when it comes to some of the larger noticing that we might potentially do. There's also coordinating with local advocacy and business organizations within the community as well to utilize their networks in terms of getting the word out about some of the communication efforts that we will want to do as part of this process. These outreach and communication strategies will be utilizing print resources as well as online resources to make sure that we're really going across the board in terms of our outreach strategies. Next slide. And then sort of the second side of this in terms of the communication toolbox is using these direct engagement methods. These, again, not exhaustive, but would be a list of methods that could be used for more targeted outreach, such as the Comp Plan Advisory Group, made up of approximately eight to 12 community members that would be engaged throughout the process, give specific advice on different pieces of the project, working with groups such as a community liaison, which could be specific members of the community that would, again, help us get the word out, and target some of those specific interest groups that Jonathan spoke to earlier that we want to ensure are part of this process that have been historically difficult to, I guess, address in processes like this. So again, making sure that this is a transparent process and across the board is important, as Jonathan went through in the beginning of this presentation. Yeah, so like I said, these are both in-person and online events to make sure that we're reaching the broadest possible audience, and I would be more than happy to go into more detail at any one of these as we go through questions.
And then I know you just got your drafts just now, so I'm happy to also walk through it if you want, if that would be helpful. So just briefly, if I can do it. So next steps, we do plan on presenting this to council. We'll take some of the feedback we hear today, edit the document, and also incorporate some other edits as needed. We're also going to present to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission on July 19 to kickstart that engagement process with that group. Finally, we do have a slew of summer engagement opportunities that we're excited about. So we have three tabling events where it'll be in-person, engaging with community members who participate in the youth science at the Plaza event on July 8, right here at City Hall parking lot. That's tailored to pre-kindergarten to fifth grade, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on July 8. So we plan on having a booth and some activities planned for the youth there. At Tour the Terrace, we'll have presence at the city booth July 21 through the 23rd. So by that time, we'll have our survey completed and ready to go. So we'll plan on having community members participate in that effort. And then National Night Out as well on August 1 is also a tabling event. 3rd of July, a Movies in the Park, we'll have flyers that we'll hand out with QR codes and a short link to the survey to just communicate to communities that this is a process that's ongoing, and we want their input and participation. Finally, number four, community visioning survey. We are in the process of finalizing the survey. It'll go live shortly, so this is what will be included on the flyer and also at these And with that, that's it for me. Open the floor to questions or feedback that you all may have. Also, if you just want to go through the document, I'm happy to do that as well.
So far, page nine, document basically followed the slides, so perfect.
Yeah, it seems like it's a summary of the document here. I do have several questions, as usual, sorry, everyone. So one of the concerns I have with breaking down a lot of these, you know, things into a lot of the groups is siloing. I know for Planning Commission, I would be interested in being able to get like a report of what all of these different groups are talking about so that we can be informed as well, and I think it would be good if we had some kind of like process, like the, you know, we should be hearing what the DEI commission is saying, we should be hearing what these groups are saying, if we needed a way to like communicate with people, or, you know, they should be hearing what we're saying as well. I would be interested to hear thoughts on how we could do that at some point.
Sure.
I guess that wasn't really a question.
Yeah, I can just speak to that briefly. I do believe we do plan on doing community engagement summaries, so sort of pulling the key highlights from different groups that we've engaged so far. So that would be one way that we could provide that information.
Okay. I'd like to see us make time at the meetings to review those after groups have talked. So, and, you know, if we need to, we can go to their meetings, or maybe they'll request the same thing, but I think it's important that, and this is a question I have as well with the scope of CPAG is, I don't know if you even pronounce that acronym, but, you know, if we're an important part of this process, I think it's important that we're able to hear what all of the other people are saying and not be in a little silo.
Definitely.
And then my other question, well, one of the other questions was if CPAG's scope had been determined yet?
So it's in development right now with our city manager, so we're just waiting to hear back from city manager as far as what that process will be. So as soon as we have that, we can provide that.
Okay, great. And is the subarea planning part of the scope or no?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so the scope, we're also doing the subarea plans at the same time as this, and so that is included in the scope?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay. How does someone become an interested party?
Interested party, so, so these are some of the community contacts that we've developed throughout our engagement process. So our communications manager actually tracks a list of groups that we outreach to. So a lot of the names are listed here in the plan. The organization names are from that list that's tracked. But we also, as the CED department, have a list, so for example, from our SEPA contact list that we use to provide notice of any SEPA processes, we pull from that list as well.
Okay, and how fluid is this list when you start forming groups and things like that?
Can you expand on that question?
So, you know, I see that this is the final draft report here for the public participation plan, and then I look at the appendix, and it's like, you know, a pretty good list of groups. I haven't had time to review it in depth, but I noticed a couple of, you know, emissions that I think should be put in, like, I don't see, maybe it's in there, but HASCO, like, I think the city recently appointed as like the affordable housing provider of the whole city, so like, you know, I think that's pretty important. And then also, as, you know, just looking through the list and seeing, you know, who I know, like, some of these people are replicated, like, I'm not totally sure why Edmund Center for the Arts is, like, you know, things in Edmunds, are we outreaching to other cities as part of our comprehensive process? Like, so I'm assuming that this list is still very fluid, and there are a lot of people coming on to that, and like, way further down the process is where we're starting to put that on, and where we start to make the focus groups and actually have people meet. And so I'd be interested to hear a bit more about the timeline for that and how somebody becomes a person on one of these focus groups.
Yeah, so I'll just speak to the list that's here. There's a note that says it's a preliminary list for now, and it'll be modified as we move forward. So actually, that's some good suggestions to include those names, so we can incorporate that into this list. Yeah, do you have anything? But yeah, this is an ongoing list, and this is a draft, so right now, as far as the phases of engagement that are explained on page nine, so the upcoming, this is relevant to Phase One, and then we do have the other phases of engagement plans. So when we get to that part of the project, we will have more opportunities to engage with others who are not on this, on this list, yeah.
Okay, great. And I see that one of the categories is property owners for redevelopment. Can you expand on what you mean by that, or are the categories still fluid at this point?
Yeah, so that would be some of our multifamily providers that are doing renovations of their properties, so that's one example. Another example would be out here on Rogers Market, the Sound Transit Project.
Okay. I would also be interested in hearing from people who, like, you know, there's a particular size range of project, right? Like, you know, a lot of them, we kind of make this assumption that everyone's going to buy up the small pieces of land and then build a giant thing, but I don't think that's going to be a safe assumption because, like, if you look at places in Seattle where they've already kind of gone through this process, like, we have these giant pieces of land, but then they've got little pieces of land within them that just didn't quite aggregate for whatever reason. And so I'd be interested in, like, you know, hearing from people who own a variety of ranges of sizes of property, maybe even people who might not be considering redeveloping their property and might just live in a house or something, but would be interested in, you know, redeveloping something of that scale. So I think there's a question of scale, like, you know, I'm just kind of spitballing here, so it doesn't have to be that, but the sort of a range of scales of redevelopment, too, I think would be important because
Yes.
... one of the things that I think the town center area that I would like to see us address at some point in the future is like, what do you do with these smaller properties? Because we have a lot of them in the town in addition to some of the bigger properties.
Yeah, and I mean, that's part of the exciting part of this update, too, with all the new legislation for middle housing and Phil, so I'm sure we will get to that.
Great. I think this is a good start. I see your timeline here, and it's, at some point, we'll develop into this further, but I think that's the questions I had, so thanks for bearing with me.
Anybody else have any questions? Not hearing or seeing any. Thought it was kind of interesting was part of the engagement, doing the youth science tabling, surprising kids want to be more academically inclined in the summer, but it's important, you know, to reach out to, you know, kids. It starts their process of civic engagement, young, at a young age, and it kind of leads me to the, you know, your other groups category, and in some cases, I, you know, there's specific call-out to specific Girl Scout troops and Boy Scout troops and Cub Scouts, but, you know, only just one or two specific, and then it's just kind of a general, all scouting troops or stuff. I'm just kind of curious, is there a reason why certain groups are called out individually versus all the groups that are in the city, or is it just, has there been previous engagement with them specifically?
Yeah, I will say this is a draft. I do need to go through that list and really refine it
Okay.
... to pull out the ones more higher level groups and determine whether there's more specific specificity.
Yeah, I mean, with most kids, you know, you'd like to think they'd be engaged, but it's going to go over their heads, really engaging with their parents. They're the ones, you know, it's getting the word out to them.
And if they're on the list, too, it's not that we'll do, like, really specific engagements, more about informational, getting the word out to make sure that they're aware of the process. And so as we move forward and we identify needs for a focus group with a specific interest group, for example, yeah.
And then sort of the same thing with the developers list, you know, just at a glance, you know, I'm looking at it, and I can see one actual developer kind of being represented three different times on this list, so maybe pare that down or just like have the business name as opposed to, you know, the individual. I know some of these, they're more consultants, so, you know, they kind of
Right.
... they act, you know, under their own name, but I'm, you know, I'm not calling out anybody in particular, but I can see one where I see them on here three times, so. Pretty much, oh, the other thing I had, in addition to these, you know, individual outreach and engagement opportunities, will there be actual formal charrettes where all the public can come together and engage at the same time?
Yeah, that's, we still need to figure out that timeline for that, but that definitely is an opportunity to do more of an open house style
Gotcha.
... where all community members can gather and weigh in.
And then, I know I've said this before, but just another reminder, especially since the city council wants to go with another advisory group, which I had sort of recommended against, the, make sure that there's enough time in this whole process for, when it comes time for the planning commissions, chance at this, that we have enough time to do our own visioning and scoping, because we're probably going to have our own independent idea of, you know, what we're looking for that might be separate from what the public wants or what this advisory group is going to suggest, so.
Okay.
Your question made me think of another observation or question or something, the subarea plans. I don't know if that's under CPAG or something, but if it's like the town center subarea plan, they had their own group as well, and I don't know if we want to start a precedent or something, but when you have a subarea plan of having like a group of people, like, sort of with that subarea plan within their scope, and, you know, we're obviously making more groups now and more work, but...
Yeah, no. No, I mean, there, you know, if there wants to be one advisory group for the whole process, that's, you know, that's fine, but I don't think we should need to be getting into an advisory group for both the comp plan and each individual subarea plan, since we're plan, since we're all dealing with it at the same time.
Right.
I think it'd kind of be covered under, under one process.
Yeah. I would say it'll be important to include at least one or two members of the community who either reside or own a business in those sub areas.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, if we did have something like neighborhood, or, you know, like neighborhood organizations like in other cities in our region, where it was like a neighborhood council or something, this would be an opportunity to start them and engage them. But this, doing it in this part of this process would be kind of a top-down thing, which I would have questions about. But if we have the opportunity to, you know, I mean, my concern here is that if the sub-area plans and the comp plan, I mean, how close are they, how much is the sub-area plan a separate thing from the comp plan? And how much of that sub-area plan should be specific to the neighborhood, and how much of that sub-area plan should be specific to the overall comprehensive plan? Like, you know, is it just, you know, the sub-area plan is just part of the comp plan, or are we trying to, like, look at each individual neighborhood and then spend some specific time and attention on that?
That's what the sub-area plan is.
Right.
We're focusing specific attention on that specific part of the city. It just happens to exist in the overall body of the comp plan as well.
Right. But I think in this case, the risk is that it winds up becoming subsumed into this comp plan. Like, we don't have, you know, it's not seen as a separate development, like, it's not seen as a separate planning process, which, you know, is okay, but I think there still needs to be some carve-out for, like, you know, okay, this is a neighborhood. We have some attention to the neighborhood. It's its own thing, like, it should almost be more of a, like, a dialogue, rather than just like, oh, that we all have this attention, and we're focusing our attention on here, and now we're focusing our attention on here, and now we're focusing it on the whole thing. Like, if we're looking at a sub-area plan, I think a lot of sub-area plans sort of are their own standalone thing.
Yeah. Being that I've been begging for this for over a decade, I'll take it however I can get it, but it obviously is, you know, up to staff and the consultants how they want to manage that.
Yeah. Yes.
I'll let you.
Yeah, so it is a separate process, but it's consistent with the update process. So, I'm ensuring that it is aligned with the updates to the GMA and all the new legislation. It'll have separate analyses from the comp plan, but it's a separate document that's incorporated into the comprehensive plan. And we thought it would be a good opportunity to begin this process with this update.
Okay. If there's a way, maybe it doesn't have to be a CPAG or something, but if there's a way to get, like, an interest group or something for those sub-area plans, I think that's an important category of interested groups of people wanting for each sub area.
And then I would say, I don't, you know, it sounds like you guys are still working with, I guess, council on the makeup of how this advisory group, you know, for the overall comp plan process will work. The one thing that I would suggest is the last advisory group that council decided to do for the town center, which you were on, council made it a 50-50 split of developers and citizens, let the developers select who they wanted to be on there, and then allowed for the citizen side to have developers, family members, represent the residents as well. So, it was kind of thumb on the scale, not exactly well-balanced. So, if we're going to be going down that route again, I would like to see a better balance of, you know, if you're going to have developers, have developers, but also have actual residents and actual business owners as well.
Yeah.
I think that would be more fair. And on the last process, council decided, and it wasn't a unanimous, you know, a unanimous decision, but they decided not to have anyone from the planning commission be allowed to have an active voice in that. We, there were two liaisons that were selected. I was one of them, but we didn't have a vote in anything, and we were just almost there as observers, tried to chime in when I could, especially advising, you know, council members, you know, what certain actions would cause or, you know, what the thought process was behind that. But it also made it harder when, you know, certain interests were trying to influence things one way, and then as the planning commission got a hold of it, you know, trying to make it more balanced or more, to better capture what the planning commission's vision was, it was, it was a heavier lift with not a lot of time to do it. So, that's why I kind of bring up the timeline issue as well.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have some guidance from the city manager this week, so I will touch base and see if there's any update on that. And regarding the group makeup, we do want to be transparent and ensure that's equitable, that we've equitably selected members to be on this representative body, so.
I mean, at the end of the day, the planning commissions, you know, we're going to have our ability to put our, you know, have our input in.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be nice to actually have the time to...
There would be many opportunities for planning commission, too.
I mean, I know, you know, we can't, we have, you know, we've got these hard state-mandated deadlines, but, you know, I'll be squawking if I feel that we're being short-changed. It's like, oh, no, we got to get into council, because I've got people. It's like, well, no. This is my warning now, so.
Noted.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, when we had the town center process, you know, if the process for CPAG is similar to that, I would be concerned about, very concerned about siloing. I mean, I remember one point during that process where we were figuring out, well, where is the boundary of the town center? And the process that determined that boundary was every member sort of drew a line on the map, and then at the next meeting, like, he was, I don't remember if it was a consultant or the staffer, somebody came back with a line saying, this is the town center, and then, like, we collectively agreed. Like, I mean, I think that is a pretty important, like, decision, but I would say that it probably could have used a little bit more, like, you know, and this is just one example, right? It's not, this isn't the only decision, but like, when the decisions are made in these kind of groups, like, I think, you know, there's probably some more vetting and communication that could happen. And so, if, like, the comp plan starts in one group and then rolls it to a certain point, and then that rolls, like, you know, there are, you know, other groups that I think might need to vet it a little bit further. And, like, I'm specifically thinking of DEI, for example. Like, I think they should be more involved in this process, probably us, but, you know, we will probably be a part of that process naturally. Like, you know, there's a lot of engagement that sort of needs to happen. So, this is where I would sort of like to see more communication between the groups. And rather than having a linear process, maybe it's a little bit more, you know, people sort of talk about what the other groups have been doing, and then during that process, there's more of a communication.
Anyone else?
No, I think you guys answered my questions. I was wondering, one, if this was a newly-developed group, and it sounds like it is, we never used this particular CPAG before, and how, we're looking at this last, how we're going to get people for this group. And I guess, optimistic, do we think we're going to have a pretty good turnout? Only eight to 12 members from this two-page, three-page list here.
I'm sure we'll be able to cover that.
Are any of them going to be on the group that you were on and maybe feel burned because it didn't, something didn't go the way they want, and maybe go, eh, we've already tried that once, and, you know, these are, I know you don't have the answers, but these are the things that I come to my mind, like, yeah, you called me last time, I didn't get my say, why, I don't think I'm going to show up again. I mean, will that, I'm wondering if that will happen. I don't know, you don't know the answers, but I suppose are the things that bubble up into my head is...
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we've been coming here, and I go to the city council meetings from time to time, and, and public doesn't seem to come, or, and so I'm just wondering, are we going to get them for this as well?
I would just pipe in, being a part of these processes now for almost two decades.
Yes.
For these bigger events, we tend to see a higher turnout, especially, you know, now with COVID, kind of, sort of being on the remission, so to speak.
Yeah.
Maybe people start showing up again, but yeah, these big, I can remember when we, not the most recent town center plan, but the one that we did in 2007, 2008-ish, we had three different charrettes, and each charrette had over 100 people.
Okay.
Come do it. It was, it was quite a diverse group of citizens giving their input, and what was kind of surprising is how many were for sort of changing the vision of the town center to something more than what it currently existed, and how a lot of the participants were on the same page.
Okay.
That was kind of surprising. We figured we were going to get a lot of, oh, no, don't change anything, or everybody was just going to be all over the place to the point where it was almost like too, you know, too much data noise. You couldn't really parse through it, but no, it was, it was really clear, you know, after those three, three charrettes. So, hopefully, it'll be the, you know, the same this time around. They, there was one public sort of charrette, I think we did for the most recent town center, you know, that was done at the library. You know, the staff did a head count, but, you know, I was there, and I was like, well, how many of these are developers, and how many are developer family, and how many are actual general public? So, you know, was, maybe wasn't as balanced as you would hope, but it, I would say, being that it's not just dealing with the sub-one area of town, it's dealing with the entire city plus two sub-areas, I think you're going to pique enough interest between business owners, residents, developers, that hopefully we'll have a high turnout. That's why I was asking about the charrettes, because that's where I'm expecting to see the biggest.
That's the one, the biggest turnout.
The biggest turnout of people at the same time, where we can kind of hear a voice all at once, as opposed to a particular type of group at one engagement opportunity, might be completely different than a different engagement opportunity. You know, here, you got everybody as a collective together at the same time.
I like it. Okay.
And we do want to leverage those past engagement strategies as well, knowing that it's worked in the past, so try to implement that this new update.
Nice. All right.
I would say we are going to offer some suggested names for the CPAG. So, if you have any recommendations or names that come out to you...
Planning commission members.
I mean, from the community. I mean, I offer that to you, to some of those names.
And even, even, you know, for the planning commission, even, you know, even if it turns out that there aren't members actually on, you know, on that advisory group, you know, those are public meetings, you can still show up, you can, you know, and observe.
And hear, yes.
Who's not allowed on to be the CPAG? Is that determined yet? Can a council member be on it? Can people who don't live in Mount Lake Terrace be on it?
I don't think council would be on it as a member. The way...
Maybe a liaison.
Perhaps, but that's not, it's not decided upon yet. And I don't think that's the intention either. So, like I said, I just need to hear back from the city manager and gather what that looks like.
Okay. It sounds like when we have the scope determined, we'll be able to figure out, like, what we need to do in order to work more broadly with the groups. Like, there are several groups that, like, you know, I can imagine, like, you know, because, I mean, you know, we have to hear what they have to say, and, like, they have important information. And so, like, you know, RPAC or DEI would be really valuable, like, I would like to hear from them as we talk about this. CPAG, CPOG, I don't know how to pronounce this acronym. If they're, if it's more like, you know, they're, you know, taking it and rolling with it, I would like to talk to them. If it's like a group of experts, I would definitely want to hear from them. It sounds like it might be something in between them, in between. So, like, you know, I think when we know more about this group and what its intent is, we can figure out what it's, how we can all collectively add value in a constructive way, that we are, again, not siloed, but communicating.
The other thing that I would sort of bring up is on the last town center process, the sort of base starting point that the advisory group sort of launched from was a, you know, kind of a concept map that city staff put together, created a, you know, kind of a starting point based off of, we had updated the code within the last decade, staff provided, you know, based off of all the input that they've been receiving since that decade happened, even with staff turnover, what was working, what wasn't working, staff's ideas of, this is, this is how we think it should go. And then, obviously, it was molded between the advisory group, and then once the planning commission got it, we were able to sort of put our final touches on it. Because we're going to be doing the same thing with Melody Hill, because that's a sub-area we've already tackled, but also a sub-area that we really haven't touched before, you know, as a specific individual focus. I'm sure, I know I have some ideas of where I think we should be starting and, you know, what our base start should be. You know, I always think, you know, go big, because it's going to have to get pared down a little bit anyway. I think that starting point is really important for, you know, newer people to the process, who, you know, kind of get their eyes on it, you know, moving forward from there. Because my other concern is, is that it's going to be so radically different from what the planning commission will propose, that we're almost reinventing the wheel again as we, as we go through that process. So, I don't know if it is staff's intention to internally come up with those, sort of those base starting points and introduce them to, you know, the advisory group or, you know, whatever this process is going to end up being, or if it's going to be the contracted staff, you know, doing it with staff's recommendation, I would say, maybe kind of do some reach-out with the planning commission first, just so you can get an idea of, you know, where we're at to start off with, and then, you know, try and go from there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Don't want to forget Miguel? All right. So, I think, I think that's it. So, is that all you guys had for this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what I'll do is I'll provide more edits to this document, and I could send it back to the planning commission once we have it. Yeah. We'll continue this dialogue and conversation, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to be fun. Looking forward to it.
All right. So, it looks like next on the agenda is the director's report.
Good evening. So, just a couple of things to share with y'all. Just want you to know that this is a starting point draft public participation plan. So, we're here to get your input. So, please comment on that. I know you guys are seeing the actual plan tonight, as we're kind of scrambling to get going and get things put together. This is going to go to the city council on the 17th. It's also going to diversity, equity, and inclusion committee for comments on the 19th. So, it's far from done, and it's really about taking a product to you guys as a starting point and then fleshing it out to get our process going and to get input early, which is what we're trying to do, because we're scrambling a little bit with 3rd of July Tour de Terrace, National Night Out, and we want to be out there in front of the community and get their input. And if we don't hustle, then we're going to lose all that good opportunity coming up when people are out and about, and we can do that. So, that's kind of why you're maybe not getting a awesome product at this point, but a starting point. And so, the sooner we can get your comments on different things, I took notes of what you guys said, but the better, or if you have any ideas on that, because we want to have some materials available for the 3rd of July, that's next Monday. And so, we just want to get some product out there for people to start giving us their ideas on community-wide, and figuring we're going to get a pretty good cross-section of folks at 3rd of July Tour de Terrace over the three days, National Night Out. So, we want to be there. That's, of course, in addition to the other things that we have planned, but just a really good opportunity to... a really good opportunity to, um, catch what's on people's minds as well. This week, uh, we're undergoing software training for our new software rollout, which we're hoping to get done and roll, do a soft rollout in October if possible and be fully rolled out before the end of the year. So we have some, um, counter hours that are reduced this week, just to make sure that we're getting everybody, permitting that comes through CED is engineering, public works, um, land use, building. So a lot of people are, are working in the system, finance, and the whole idea is that we're all integrated instead of like what we were talking about earlier, siloed, which is our current permitting systems, um, where nobody knows what's going on, um, with each other. So, um, so a lot of people are going to be doing, doing that, um, this week. So we're a little bit scrambled with that as well, but, um, that's kind of what we're up to this week. For your meeting on the, uh, on the, the 10th of July, we don't have anything on the schedule. My preference is if we could cancel that so we can, um, focus on the task at hand, which is getting up and really prepared for our public involvement, um, getting this, uh, public participation plan where it needs to be and, um, all of our other materials for our website and, um, what we're doing for public outreach to get that done. On the 24th of July, you guys have the public hearing for the engineering, um, development manual. So we're also working on that, um, making sure that those edits are in place and preparing an ordinance, um, of which we have a lot of work to do on that ordinance, just because we have a lot of, um, standards that are all over the code right now. So trying to help engineering get those things done, um, as well. So that's kind of what we're up to. I don't really have anything else I can think of. Like I said, uh, 3rd of July, next Monday night, the extravaganza. And we have a events coordinator who's helping do, um, some of the events in the city. So there, you might've seen there's movie nights this summer and trying to be a little bit more proactive in getting the beauty, business community to sponsor some events and just have more things community-wise to get people out and about. So you're probably seeing some of that stuff kind of take off right now. And then just have some dedicated folks, a little bit more than we've had in the past of helping get Tour de Terrace, um, permitted and set up and all of those good things where before it was, hey, you, um, get over here and, uh, come down here and do this or that. I'm not saying that that's not happening because that's happening as well, but hopefully just still a little bit more organized in that as well, so. Any questions from me about anything in particular?
What about the posting on Facebook? Are there going to be new members to the commission or?
There is. I was, um, gone and so that happened when I was, um, not here. So I am not sure of who those folks are, but the city council appointed folks to all the commissions.
Yeah.
Based on applications. And so I apologize, I don't know, um, who, who all those folks are, but planning commission, RPAC, uh, DEIC has a bunch of new members and that's why we are waiting to take, um, this plan to them as well, because I believe there's maybe two members going forward and they have like.
Four new ones.
Four new members, is it four?
Yeah.
Planning commission, we have two new member, um, DEIC have four new member, yeah, four new members. ART have one new members.
Does RPAC have anybody new?
RPAC, um, they have actually to be appointed, yeah, two position were reappointed.
So, yeah, so, yeah, they're, you're probably more in the know than I am of.
Oh, actually, RPAC have two reappointed and two new appointment.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So four.
Yep. And planning commission, we have one reappointed and two new appointment. Uh, diversity, DEIC have four brand-new appointment. And ART, um, advisory, they have one reappointed and one new appointment.
Yeah.
Does that mean that we'll meet our new people in July or when do we meet?
Yes, in July is the, is the, is the term start. So is it July 1st?
Uh, yep, they will start the terms in July.
Yeah.
Yep.
So forgive me if I forgot, we got two new members? Are we losing somebody?
Yeah, I'm trying to do the mental math. That's not adding up.
I don't know.
We should have seven total.
Correct.
And we have six right now.
Yes.
So we should only be getting, if one's being reappointed, then we should only be getting one new.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that, um, both, um, Miguel and Isaac were up for reappointment and they reappointed Isaac. And there's, they appointed two members who, I'm not sure who they are.
Yep, um, Miguel and Isaac are both turned on June 231st, uh, 30 years. And we have not received the application, reappointment application for Miguel, um, so far. So, uh, we just received the reapplication, application from Isaac, so that why, uh, city council receive and interview Isaac.
I never got the application.
Oh, actually, um, in March 6th, uh, city clerk, Jennifer, sent out an email to all commissioner in all board and commissions, telling them about their terms and the process to sending in the applications. Uh, and then on 17th of March, Ricky, on behalf of city clerk, sent out another reminder to all commissioner, telling them about the due date to sending the reapplication, uh, reappointment applications. And so we sent twice and then we opened all that announcement on Facebook, social media, website about the application, the deadline, the application and process, the whole thing. So, uh, yeah, unfortunately, we have not received, uh, the application from Miguel, um, until now, so.
Yeah. You've noticed the same thing I did. I'm like, who's, who's out?
Miguel, is this a surprise to you?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, um, I suggest that the city, um, manager, um, reach out to Miguel. So I will, Miguel, I will talk to our city manager tomorrow and have him reach out to you.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. I also, um, Shannon is sitting by, um, LAN. Shannon is, um, uh, one of our new admins, so we have an admin group. We don't have admins necessarily appointed to each department anymore, but technically I consider LAN our appointment. And now I consider Shannon our appointment. Um, and we're just going to have two for CED now because the city manager stole LAN, but it's Shannon's first day, um, so welcome her. So you'll be seeing things from Shannon on planning commission. She'll be the planning commission secretary and, um, all of those good things, so.
Welcome, welcome.
You'll see Shannon.
So will she be the point of contact then if somebody needs to do the meeting remotely or?
Yep. So Shannon will be sending you out all your notifications, um, all those good things, um, with backup from the other, um, admins as well, so.
Well, thanks and thanks for joining and welcome. Um, and I hope I don't have to email you about absences at the last minute too often.
Is that a warning? It sounded like a warning right there to me. I'm not.
I missed, I missed streets day because I had food poisoning and I'm just like, ah, so I, I don't like to miss these things.
Yeah. You never know what, what comes up. So, um, also, uh, just doing this for as many years as I have, um, July and August tend to be a little tricky just because people are doing vacationing or doing things. So, uh, um, understandable that, you know, um, just when we know it's great. That way we can just make sure that we've got enough folks that are going to be here, particularly if we have a public hearing like we do on the 24th. We need to have a quorum in order to move forward on, on that business. But other than that, um, yeah, that's really all I have to share. Like I said, unless you guys have, um, something to share or ask or.
Anybody for, anything for the director? Nope. Nope. Not hearing or seeing anything. Uh, so it's like item number seven, miscellaneous business by call-up planning commissioners. Kind of right before we get into that, I think for last meeting, we still need to do a excused absence for Commissioner Sandoval.
Yeah, I received an email from Miguel. Um, he, um, mentioned about he's, uh, not, uh, here for the last meeting and, uh, he was on the field. So he apologized for not coming for last meeting. So he had an excuse option from last meeting.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion for an excused absence for, for Miguel for the last meeting?
I motion to excuse Miguel.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to have an excused absence for Commissioner Sandoval for the, uh, June 12th, 2023, uh, planning commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, so other miscellaneous business? Anybody have any miscellaneous business?
I, I do need, need to be excused on July 10th, but it sounds like we may not have a meeting then, so.
Did we need to confirm that we needed to cancel that meeting? Did we want to do that now?
That was actually, I forgot to ask that.
Yeah, I mean, if we can just say, hey, if we can confirm that and then everybody knows and, um, that would be great. I'm going to be fairly, um, staffless here for the next little, little bit, um, as well and just, so it would, it would work out, um, if that could happen as well. And I just don't want you guys to come here, just to come here if we don't have, if we don't have business to take care of or something worth your time. I don't want to take up your time as well, so.
Anyone wants to join me at happy hour on Diamond Knot? It's probably still in my calendar.
Sounds like a better idea.
It does, it's a good idea.
Um, but we can't talk about planning commission at the risk of having a quorum.
That's correct.
So anybody else, any miscellaneous business, any other possibly excused absences coming up other than the 10th?
Have we already excused Isaac?
Oh.
He had a requested absence, right? Um, motion to excuse Commissioner Harrison?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Harrison for tonight's meeting. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, so Commissioner Harrison has an excused absence for tonight. Okay, one last call. Any miscellaneous business? Hearing or seeing any? So with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.